It is Tuesday, May 7, 2024, at 6:00 p.m. Call the meeting in order. Madam Clerk, may I have a roll call, please?
Vice Mayor Lozano, Councilmember Papino.
Here.
Councilmember Farmer.
Here.
Councilmember Vandenberg.
Here.
Mayor Sandu.
Here.
Please join silent prayer and flag salute. Salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Madam Clerk, may I have a replay statement?
This meeting of the Galt City Council will be cable cast on Metro Cable 14, the local government affairs channel on the Comcast Consolidated Communications and AT&amp;T U-verse Cable Systems. The meeting is closed captioned and webcast at metro14live.zaccounty.gov. Today's meeting replays Friday, May 10 at 9:00 a.m. and Saturday, May 11 at 9:00 a.m. This meeting can also be viewed at youtube.com/metrolcable14.
Thank you. Next agenda item B, Agenda approval addition or deletion council. If it is none, the next agenda items, C, presentation. Subject, 2024 National Public Works Week proclamation. This proclamation by the City of Galt, California National Public Works Week, May 19, 25, 2024, Advancing Quality of Life for All. Whereas public works professional focus on infrastructure, facilities, and service that are of vital importance to sustainable and resilient communities and do the public health, high quality of life, and well-being of the people of Galt. Whereas these infrastructure, facilities, and services could not be provided without the dedicated effort of public work professionals, including employees at all level of government and private sector, who are responsible for constructing, operating, and maintaining our nation's transportation, water supply, water treatment, and solid waste systems, public buildings and other structures and facilities essential for our citizen. Whereas it is the public interest for citizens, civil leaders, and children in Galt to have an understanding of the importance of public works in their respective communities. Whereas the year of 2024 makes the 64th Annual National Public Works Week sponsored by the American Public Works Association. Now therefore, be it now resolved, the City of Galt hereby designate the week of May 19 to 25, 2024, as National Public Works Week. Be it further resolved that all citizens recognize the substantial contribution our public work staff make every day to protect our health, safety, and quality of life. On the behalf of whole council, I would like special thank you for the Public Works Department, their hard work. Now I would like to ask Public Work Director Mike Selling if he wants to say a few words before I give a proclamation.
Well, thank you, Mayor and Council. We really appreciate this recognition. And I also want to thank the interim city manager and city clerk for also their efforts in making this happen. On behalf of the Public Works Department and all of our dedicated staff, it's my sincere pleasure and privilege to accept this proclamation. I know I've said it before, but it does bear repeating that we have the best staff, and I'm extremely proud of them and the consistent high level of service that they provide the constituents of this great American little town. They're incredibly hardworking, professional, skilled, dedicated, and resourceful. Their work efforts truly have and continue to advance the quality of life for all here. Thank you again on their behalf for this recognition. It is greatly appreciated.
All right, next, agenda item D, public comment.
Under Government Code Section 54954.3, members of the public may address the City Council on non-agenda items. The public comments section is for the City Council to receive comments, except for brief responses to questions. No discussion or action may be taken on any item that is not listed on the agenda. Please limit comments to a maximum of five minutes. Consistent with the City Council procedural guidelines, the mayor reserves the right to shorten the time limit for speakers to ensure the efficient and timely completion of all city business on the agenda. We do have five comments. First is Dawn, and I apologize, I can't read the last name.
Good evening. My name is Dawn Panasco. I reside in the Emerald Park subdivision. Home's built by Mike Guttridge. We moved in at the completion of our home being built on December 1, 1990, so approaching 34 years. It's a beautiful neighborhood in which we have enjoyed in the past 34 years. But back in 2018, we had a family move in directly alongside of us at 753 Corby Circle. This is when our problems began. Vehicles were seen coming and going. Most of these vehicles were not licensed or registered and allowed to drive on our public roads. If they were licensed or registered, they didn't have current tags. Then we noticed newer vehicles being hidden behind the RV gate and also in the garage. Boats started coming. We witnessed VIN numbers being grinded off out on the public street, and then that boat and boat trailer would disappear. First thing that came to our mind is we now had a chop shop right next door to us. It did not take long from there for the house to start deteriorating. Lawns were not being maintained. The house soon went into foreclosure, which the owner, Mr. Sean Myers, would file for extensions. Then COVID hit, and he was allowed to remain at the residence. Mr. Myers became ill with cancer. And just a few months prior to his death, he brought his estranged son to live with him. So now we have an 18-year-old child squatting next door to us. And if we thought we had problems with Mr. Myers, this son of his has caused us a living hell. This young man, Trent Myers, started having weekend parties, music into the late hours, illegal fireworks, racing motorcycles and vehicles on our public roads, in the backyard, and yes, inside his home and out the front door. The house maintenance soon came to a complete stop. I first reported these conditions to our city enforcement, Mr. Craig Hoffman, on August 2, 2021, quickly approaching three years ago. And then since 2023, with Mr. TJ Godati. At that time, Mr. Hoffman shared that the house was receiving $100 fines weekly and would increase to 500 if the yards were not maintained. Mr. Myers would make attempts, but the yard never fully got in order, and then we were right back to where we started. I wrote to our chief of police on August of 2023 and CC'd Mr. Sean Farmers and most of the city council members. Mr. Myers, I believe, or Mr. Farmers, I believe, was acting merit the time with a list of complaints to rectify this problem. Did any of you bother driving by this residence or remember the letter? Because our neighbor just wrote to Mr. Sean Farmers last week, and he said, "Thank you for bringing it to our attention." So it sounded as if nobody ever knew about this problem that's been going on for several years. I'm going to leave you tonight with a list of complaints and also photographs to prove our case. Also, I do have the utmost respect for people in authority. I am an active member of the community. I worked for the Galt School Districts for 26 years. I raised four children here in Galt and seven grandchildren. I'm a member of the Galt Historical Society. My husband also worked on Measure R for the first few years that it was implemented to receive funding for our Galt Police Department. I grew up in the Algro Fire Department as my father was a battalion chief for Algro and has a building named in his honor. My son now is an active member with the fire district as an engineer. We also have family members serving on military, police, and fire, and hospitals. So yes, I am an upstanding citizen, and yes, I do respect all of those that are in authority. But I have never been treated so poorly as I have been by the Galt police officers and city officials. We have no reason to make these acquisitions up. We have gone to code enforcement. We've gone to the Galt PD, and we've come before all of you, and nothing has been done. So anyways, I'll leave, like I said, I'll leave these with you to look over, and hopefully we can get something resolved. But thank you for your time.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you for giving us that information. I think Community Development Director is not here. I want to be short, and I think Chief is here. Chief, do me a favor. Could you get the information, and then we talk after that? Thank you. Let's go to the next.
Brenda Kontos.
I have some photos to pass out to the city council.
Thank you.
Thank you. Hi. My name is Brenda Kontos. My husband and I live across the street from 753 Corby Circle. The photos you're viewing were taken of that address on April 19 of this year. Occupant Trent Myers. About 10 days after these photos were taken, Trent's grandparents came by and removed the mattress and some of the trash from the driveway. The rest remains in one form or another. Some of those loose items were thrown into the back of the white truck. In one form or another, this or similar views of trash, unregistered vehicles parked on the street, multiple motorcycles on front lawn or on the street are what my husband and I see from our kitchen windows. We consider ourselves quote-unquote lucky in that we do not live on either side of or behind this house. However, we are subjected to the view 24/7/365. Trent's father, Sean, set this example almost from the first day he moved into the house, approximately six years ago. We think Trent moved in maybe about a year ago. Sean passed away last year, and now Trent continues the behavior. When anyone approaches Trent about the yard, he becomes obnoxious, verbally abusive, and argumentative. He's definitely more belligerent when his friends are around and he has an audience. If you drive around our circle, you'll see the pride of homeownership and the upkeep of our yards is very important to the rest of us. Numerous calls to Galt PD code enforcement have been made over the last few years. We pay our taxes, spend our dollars in Galt, and this house is a blight on our beautiful neighborhood. We'd like to know what can be done to solve this problem. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Paula Magna.
Good evening. I'd like to pass out some pictures, too.
Hey, good evening, Mayor and council members. My name's Paula Magna, and my husband and I have lived on Corby Circle for over 30 years. We've always had the utmost respect for our city law enforcement and safety personnel. You know the reason why I'm up here, so I won't go into that. But one of the things I'd like to say is there is vehicles, boats, motorcycles, four-wheelers, junk continually being brought to the residence. These vehicles are never registered and parked on the streets. We have called the code enforcement, the police. Nothing was done for a very long time. After witnessing the owner sanding off the numbers on one of the boats, they finally came and towed the boat as it was, in fact, stolen. There's no report of that, however. That's what the police told us when it was going on, that it was, in fact, a stolen boat. The plates have been removed from all the motorcycles. To this date, none of these vehicles are registered. Those motorcycles and vehicles are still used on the streets of Galt. The kids are doing wheelies up and down the street on the motorcycles, even when the children are outside playing. They've been doing the circles at the corners of our streets and in front of the house, almost hitting my granddaughter's car. She called the police twice one night and sat and watched out her window. No police showed up. They're driving minibus through the gate, through the backyard, through the house, flying out the front door and into the street, back again, almost hitting my granddaughter as she drove by, almost hitting Dawn Panasco one night as I was watching out the front door. He shines his light, a bright light, into my granddaughter's car as she's driving down the street. It blinds her, and she can't see. If she hits another car, what's going to happen? You know, this kid is an absolute... He's out of control. He's totally out of control. Okay, he goes out in his garage, and he likes to rev up his motorcycles. And he'll stand out there, and he'll yell, "F you neighbors." And he doesn't say "F," he uses the word. And he screams it. He's 18 years old. He's not 21, he's 18 years old. And there's constant drinking and partying going on at the house. This goes on every weekend. The loud noise, the motorcycles, the four-wheels ramming into trees. They think it's just fun to just destroy that whole property. Once again, they're 18 years old. There's a lot of drinking going on, and there's a lot of partying going on. This is the party house on the weekends now. You'll hear about the sign that he's posted. You'll see the picture of the sign, "F you neighbors." It's about 5 foot by 6 foot. He puts on the front of his house. Okay, I tried to speak with the man one day, and I was really nice to him. He stated that his dad should never have bought a helm on a street with all of us effing old people. I asked, "Why doesn't he just obey the laws like the rest of us do?" And he said that he has a different view on the laws, and he'll do what he wants. Even the cops don't care. He stated that he's being fined for the garbage in the driveway, and he doesn't care. He won't pay it. He said that if his house doesn't sell, it's because of us, the neighbors. And wait to see what comes down that street next. Just wait, he said. I'm warning you, I'm going to squat here until they kick me out. Our biggest concern, if the police had enforced the California Vehicle Code, Galt Municipal Code, the problem would not have escalated to this level. Those cars that were reported are still there. The police calling me after him and his friends, 18-year-old kids, tried to fight Gene Panasco. The cops called me, and he said, "Well, we got him to take down his sign, and he's just a kid without any direction." So they kept drinking and partying, underage kids, complaining about all the vehicles. That goes on and on. Some of our neighbors may or not be here. Some are afraid for retaliation. Some know that nothing is being done. There's no resolution with him other than us getting cussed out and threatened. It's getting so bad that something is going to happen between the neighbors. That's what I'm afraid of. My question is, what laws does he have to obey? What laws doesn't he? Because I'd love to know. I'd really love to know. Because he's not being put in his place. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Bonnie Rodriguez.
I kind of feel like what I have to speak about isn't quite as important. I'm sorry that you were all going through that, and I'm just a couple neighborhoods away, so I'm a little concerned. I'm actually here before you. I'm hoping it'll be a little bit of relief for you for what I'm bringing forward to you today. I think some of you may have had this in the back of your mind and are afraid to bring it up because it may seem a little self-serving. So I'm hoping that with me bringing it forward that it'll give some reflection time, and maybe we can get something done. I'm coming before you to speak about the election campaign contribution donations limit. We have an ordinance that's 22 years old. I think it is a great ordinance, but I think financially it has... It's a little old. So I'm before you to ask that, and I don't know exactly the process, that maybe council reexamines that ordinance. And I, right now, just so everyone knows, there's a contribution limit that candidates can only receive $100 from individuals. That's it. And I understand the reasoning behind it. I just, right now, I think $100 will buy a sign. It's a little different from 22 years ago. So, and I'm afraid that we might be chasing some really good candidates away who will not be able to front their own campaign. And so I'm kind of hoping that maybe we... That a discussion arises, and if it needs to have the public start this, I'm not sure exactly how it is, but it is a city ordinance. And I love the ordinance. I just think that that financial contribution portion needs to be reexamined. We might have some other candidates be able to come out if they can get maybe $200 per person to help buy two signs. You know, you know what I mean? So I think you all understand where I'm coming from, and I want to be the one to come out to say it, not trying to get it in for this election, this coming up election. So that may take a little bit of pressure off as well. We would have two years to get this all worked out, hashed out, and then go from there. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, I know we're not supposed to have a conversation, but it is my recollection that that ordinance is in place due to a public initiative and not by the city council. So that makes it a much higher hurdle to change it, if that's true.
Okay, maybe, yeah, okay. If that's what it is, then maybe I think a little bit of encouragement, or I would like some direction on how to maybe help that move forward from the public end of it. I think in my last life, before my new life right now, I had a lot of people who came from, you know, challenged financial status that would have liked to run, but that campaign finance issue scared them away. And so I think, you know, we might get some more interest, and not just council, but hopefully interest all the way around. Thanks.
Thank you, Bonnie Rodriguez. Thank you, and certainly we'll discuss with the city attorney if we can do anything.
We have one more.
Yeah, go ahead.
Ken Lee.
Good evening, council members. Ken Lee from Galt Senior Apartments. I'd like to thank for the resource fair that attended that went on today to inform and educate the Galt citizens. That's where they would bring together people so they can discuss their problems. And that's a good thing, if they can bring in code enforcement, the police there, and everything else. I couldn't make it, but I don't know what on. We need outreach for the Rite Aid building. Grocery outlet would be a nice place to go in there. It'd be a nice brick-and-motor place. It'd be a nice delivery source for EBT customers and the employee locally. They would draw to nearby shopping in the Twin Cities area. It would become a destination point because it is kind of out-of-the-way spot on Twin Cities Road. We need a low-priced grocery source. It's a retail draw for others to set up business in this town if they see successful businesses keep on coming in. The grocery outlets are locally owned businesses, and these times, the seniors need a budget-saving resource. Groceries keep on going up. Social Security keeps on going down. It's not just getting the rent, but what will benefit the most for the citizens of Galt. Because, you know, there's other things that might want to go in there, but this would benefit the seniors and low-income people. Can you use the money grants to entice the business? Should we use to draw them here? Because it's put competition among others, not hurt the healthy businesses. Okay, I also like to bring up, May is Asian History Month. Over 20 years of relentless research, two new books have been written based upon my research. Chinese historians and professors wrote them last year. One is Chinaman Takoon, and the other one is Bitterroot. Bitterroot covers the racism of 125 years that's been going on. Basically, we were general persons Chinese soldiers. We basically helped out in Mexico. One-fourth of the soldiers were housed in Iowton in 1920 at the cannery. Another one was in Antioch. Another one was in Oakland and Monterey. That was a total of 525 general persons soldiers. We were also the same people that overthrew China. It was the Imperial Army, and they overthrew China in 1910 and supported Shan Yat-Sang. Okay, we were the major canners of food between the 1900s and 1932. 60% of our food went to the war effort, and most of it went to Herbert Hoover's relief program. We developed the modern-day sterilization process of the can, which we never got to, basically patented. But a cartel took over our seven canneries, and it was called Del Monte. My family were also the Flying Tigers. They were Rosie the River Rabbit. As patriots of the United States, four of my families have Congressional Gold Medals that they received. Three were women, and one was a man. And so basically, I just wanted to let you know that Chinese were patriotic wayback. And so basically, I just wanted to let you know that Chinese were patriotic way back when too. Thank you.
Thank you, Ken Lee. Before I go to the next-gen item, I would like to ask city manager or chief that comment, you know, they have seven fifty. Actually, I, yesterday I drive by that and these pictures, I really have these picture. So.
Yeah, good evening, Mayor and Council, Chris Elias, interim city manager. And I'm going to address the code enforcement issue and I'll let the police chief talk about some of the police issues. But I want to recognize that that's an awful situation and it is an active code enforcement case. Code enforcement has been citing them weekly. We recently ratcheted that up to a daily citation. But based on what I heard today, I don't think that's going to matter much to the youngster at the home. So we'll convene as our group with legal and police and code enforcement to see what the next steps are. And that could include abatement if needed. So I appreciate your time and the testimony that you gave us today. It really is an awful situation and sorry you have to go through that.
Mayor and Council, I just wanted to provide a little bit of perspective for the police response. I got an email back on August eighth of twenty twenty-three about this issue that sounds like it was going on for some time, but we weren't looped in as code enforcement was addressing that issue. The vehicle, there was a vehicle and a boat issue that was addressed after I responded to the resident on August ninth and August tenth by August thirteenth. And then again, there was communication on February twenty-third of this, of this year. My staff has been directed to address the issues as appropriate. As of two minutes ago, there are no vehicles that are on the street that are unregistered or parked improperly. Vehicles parked in garages or backyards or in, on lawns and those kinds of things are issues related to code enforcement, which you heard from the city manager earlier, and will be handled. I personally, I generally don't do these things, but I personally have been by that house four times to evaluate it, to make sure it's being addressed by my staff. Generally, that's something I have my staff handle, but I just wanted to let you know the level of detail that we've addressed. And frankly, it is, is a code enforcement issue and the fines need to get to the point where there's a force to do something with that property ultimately. And so it sounds like on the code side, that's what's happening. But from the police, that's a response that I have.
Chief, from my understanding, when you say the fines need to increase, is that like in total or they go thousand, ten thousand?
They go, they go up to, I think, five hundred.
Yeah, correct, and then they cap out there, but then they're provided, can be provided every day the code is in, or the property is in violation. And at some point, we end up leaning the property and I think they're close to that threshold where we will lean the property for the property, for the money that is owed the city. But then next steps, you know, are a little bit more, you know, involving the legal team to get.
But I think, I think you, you hit the point that I was trying to understand, when, when the next level of action can occur and, and the city can move, even though it's difficult, it can move in a positive direction.
Correct.
Thank you.
And I do agree that the house looks horrible in a very nice neighborhood and so.
The pictures don't lie.
Right. And I have some of those same pictures with the sign and other things. So we will do what we can from the police side. Obviously, we can't go into people's homes without warrants and different things like that. The issue with the chop shop was addressed. What, there was no chop shop that we could prove out in those different things. So we got the boat moved to Elk Grove and other compliance. And the rest of the things currently are sitting on the code enforcement side, but we regularly partner with the code enforcement folks when needed, so. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, chief.
Eric, I'd like to just make a statement real quick.
Yeah.
I, I just want to say thanks to the neighbors on Corby Circle. I know I spoke to one of you by phone and, and we got the email and, and I know it's super frustrating. I, I just want to apologize, you know, when I was the mayor in this community, I do remember the issue. I do recall Mr. Godati and Mr. Hoffing giving updates on the lien situation. And what's frustrating for you guys, and I'm sure you've heard it, and for me is, you know, it's just like sometimes code enforcement issues, they're just so lengthy and like frustrating because you have to, you know, do the liens. And if people don't care about the liens, then, and we have like almost, I think it's like nine hundred and something active code enforcement cases going on right now. And, and that's not an excuse for having to go through it. But I just want to know that we do share your frustration. And I, you know, would say that you guys are brave to come forward. I know some of you, you mentioned some of your neighbors are fear for retaliation, but thank you for coming forward because the squeaky wheel does get the oil. It's a slogan I believe is very true and, and I think that you guys having the courage to come here and speak about this and bringing this to the attention of our new city manager and, and so we can all hear it. Hopefully, we can, you know, keep this ball moving forward. So I just ask you to be patient with the staff and, and just know that our city manager has stated in our police department, we're going to do everything we can to try to take care of this, so.
Thank you. Thank you for a public comment tonight. Thank you. Next-gen item, E, report by city council members on regional board, commission and committees. Council member Papano.
Yes, on April twenty-fifth, we had the air quality board meeting and a couple things out of that. One, I got volunteered and accepted to represent or to be an alternate for the Sacramento Valley Basin Wide Air Pollution Control Council should Sacramento council member Guerra not be available. And secondly, the Sacramento Emergency Clean Air Transportation Program has been updated with, I don't remember, about ten million dollars in grants. And they've changed the requirements now that it includes medium and light duty vehicles and there's no requirement to scrap a vehicle to get it. So I forwarded that onto the staff just in the, in the event that we have anything on the horizon where we would be able to put that to use for newer replacement vehicles. Because most all of the air quality stuff tends to go up towards Sacramento and certainly impacted low-income areas. So if there's, you know, some way that we can benefit from it down here, I'd like to pass it on. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Council member Farmer.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't have anything officially to report since our last meeting. Thank you.
Council member Vandenberg.
I have nothing to report at this time, thanks.
Uh, myself, I just joined that the last special meeting was major oversight committee. I was over there and all the committee member and chief was present on that meeting. And we did discuss twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four major or third quarter financing report, twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four major or quarterly financial report and twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four major or quarter financial report monthly. And twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three major annual report. And there was a discussion between chief and the committee member. And I believe they're going to bring that to the council next month. And that's all for myself on the committee. Uh, next-gen item, F, information consent calendar. It is recommended that item one through five be acted on simultaneously unless a separate discussion and our action is requested by a council member. Any council member want to pull any item from the consent calendar?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, yeah, I just had, I just want to pull F four, I just, just for a quick statement.
You want to pull or just want to be information?
Uh, no, I, just for, to make a quick statement on it.
Okay, go ahead. A bit item.
Uh, F four.
Okay. Just to clarify, if you just want to make a quick statement, you don't necessarily have to pull the item.
Okay.
For separate discussion, but it's your call.
Can I make the statement now?
Yeah.
Okay. This particular item is the, uh, just for the people that are in the room and watching, this particular item is the revamping of the AC system at the police department, which is outdated and in need of upgrade for a long some time. My statement is regarding, I, I just wanted to say I do appreciate the Public Works. The staff report's very thorough, I have no questions. But I just want to say thank you because you guys went out to bid for it and got one bid. And instead of even bringing that to council, you guys actually went back out and, and asked for more bids and got five bids. And it looks like we got a really good value bid for less than what you guys actually think it was going to be. So I know in the past, sometimes, you know, it's, you know, not just Public Works, but lots of departments, you know, come forward and say, we only got one bid, we did what we could, we need to move forward. And I know there's been a lot of pushback, especially from someone like me who is always insisting that we try to get the best value for taxpayer dollar. So I just want to say thank you for going back and, and working the, going the extra mile and getting the, the five bids. So that's all I wanted to say. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Farmer. Item one, receive and file warrant for period ending April twenty-four, twenty twenty-four. Item two, minutes of regular meeting of April sixteen, twenty twenty-four. Item three, approval of consultant contract amendment number two for the Gore Aquatic Center water slide replacement project designed with RSM CIP five thirty-one, CQ class one exemption, section one, five three zero one C. Item four, appropriation of funds for PDH VAC rehabilitation, CIP four twenty-eight, class one exemption, section fifteen, three oh one C and related action. Item number five, designation of authorization representative for the water recycling funding program grant agreement, CQ exempt one five three oh six. Any council member have any comment on this? If is not, then there is any public comment? There is no public comment. Now I'm looking for, may have a motion to approve the consent calendar.
So moved.
Is moved by council member Vandenberg.
Second?
Second by council member Papano. Adam Clerk, may I have a roll call vote, please?
Council member Papano?
Aye.
Council member Farmer?
Aye.
Council member Vandenberg?
Aye.
Mayor Sandu?
Aye, motion passed by four to zero. Uh, next-gen item, scheduled mayor notice of public hearing is none. Next-gen item, H, regular calendar, city treasure report. Treasure report for period ending March twenty twenty-four. Mr. Farrell.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. You know, I didn't realize until just a second ago that in order to sit up here at the dais, except for, for Tina, I didn't realize you had to have facial hair. I mean, yeah, even you, Frank. Okay, so, so with that, I'll, I'll get into, first, my economic report. I'm going to give you the unemployment numbers according to EDD. And I've always said, I don't trust their website, okay? They're claiming that here in the city, we have thirteen thousand two hundred employable people. And they say that twelve thousand three hundred are, are working, which is good, which equates to six point eight percent unemployment rate. Now, I think that's high. I think it's more like the, close to the county average of about four point nine percent. So again, I just want to report that. The other item that I wish to report, which is always interesting, is home prices. So for the month of April, there was, in Galt, we had twenty-five home sales. And the median price, which is the one in the middle, went for five hundred and three thousand dollars. That is, that is a home of one thousand six hundred eighteen square feet, lot size of six thousand nine hundred and seventy, which if you do the math, it comes out to three dollars and thirteen, three hundred and thirteen dollars per square foot. Okay? So, um, that's, those are the facts. The rest of the, the treasures report is before you. The, the most interesting thing, as, as I always say to this, is, you know, I always go back to look to see how much interest that we have earned. So for, during the first three quarters of this fiscal year, we've earned two million seven hundred and fifty-nine thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars. This not only is, is a record already, but there was only one year in this, in, while I've been sitting in this chair, that we've actually earned over two million dollars and that was in the oh eight, oh nine fiscal year. So we're already at, at a record-breaking pace. I do expect the city to earn three million dollars before, at the end of this fiscal year. I always tell everyone, you know, this, this money is not just designated to, like, say, the general fund or the police or anything. It's, it's spread out citywide based upon how much each department has in this, in this pool. So I always tell everyone about that. One other thing I wanted to mention tonight, normally at this meeting, I normally bring the investment policy to be approved for the, for the next fiscal year. Honestly, I forgot. So the, the point is, I'll put it on the consent calendar in about a month. I'm not changing a single word, all I'm doing is just changing the fiscal, fiscal year. So from twenty-three to twenty-four, it'll be simply twenty-four to twenty-five. Okay? So you'll see that, as I said, in about a month. I ask for your approval of the treasures monthly report and I'll answer any questions that, that you may have.
Thank you.
Sure.
Any council member?
Mr. Farrell?
Yes.
I always appreciate your reports.
Yeah, thank you.
I was just telling our city manager how, how interesting your reports are, he didn't really believe me, but.
Yeah, I, I, I'll take his side.
Yeah. Facial hair makes you sharpen the mind. So.
Is that it?
That's why you forgot.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
So just real quick, though, I mean, are you, I mean, obviously, last time we spoke, you were talking about how you were keeping, you were keeping things as short as possible as far as like the lengths of your investments? Because when rates would change, you would want to take advantage of the, the next higher rates. With the rates being where they are, where they're still staying high, but it's unlikely they're going to go up. There's talk of chopping, you know, chopping rates, but then they, but then they don't and they decide to wait off. So obviously, they're going to not go the other direction. So are you no longer looking at short investments? Are you looking to, to lock things in longer now or what?
Yeah, during the month of March, I did, I did a couple things. So I purchased two treasury bills, just three-month treasury bills. Because it was my projection that the rate is not going to change in three months. And I think that's pretty safe, that we know now. So what I wanted to do was get enough, get as much interest as we possibly could before the end of this fiscal year, right? To make sure that we're up above that three million dollar mark. Second thing is, as a matter of fact, I got the trade ticket right here. And that is, I bought a five-year federal home loan bank bond. Federal Home Loan Bank has a two-year, I should say, a right to call in two years. So worst-case scenario, in two years, they call the bond, okay? It's at five point three percent. I'm good of getting five point three percent for the next two years. In the best-case scenario, they pass on that call, call date, and we have basically a five-year bond at five point three percent. So those are the types of opportunities that I look at. And, and that's, you know, there's, I've purchased a few five-year bonds, like, say, from the beginning of the year till now. So yeah, I am going out farther now, just to try to get that, you know, try to, we know that the, that the feds are going to lower the rate at some point in time. Now speculation is, it's not until, say, November, December timeframe. So that's, you know, that's where we are. Again, they, they, they've always come out and said that they look at the unemployment, or I'm sorry, they, they look at the inflation rate. And that inflation rate has to be right around two percent before they start cutting. And it's, it's not there yet.
And you, and you still have most of the city's money invested in cryptocurrency, right? I'm joking for the audience.
Oh, boy.
Thank you, Sean, I appreciate it.
I don't even want to start that rumor.
Any council member, any other comment? I've seen now there's any public comment?
No public comment.
There is no public comment and now I'm looking for a motion to accept the treasure report as submitted.
So moved.
Moved by council member Vandenberg.
Second?
Second by council member Papano. Madam Clerk, may I have a roll call vote, please?
Council member Papano?
Aye.
Council member Farmer?
Aye.
Council member Vandenberg?
Aye.
Mayor Sandu?
Aye, motion passes by four to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Farrell. Next-gen item is city attorney's office. Subject, amend chapter two point seven five point zero three zero of the municipal code pertaining to the Parks and Recreation Commission's purpose and. Subject, amend chapter 2.75.030 of the municipal code pertaining to the Parks and Recreation Commission's purpose and function. Mr. Supplandario?
Yes, thank you, thank you, Mayor, Council. This item is a pretty narrow, discreet, three discrete changes specifically to the municipal code, section 2.75.030. Again, as it relates to the purposes and functions in that section of the Parks and Rec Commission. The Parks and Rec Commission, that ordinance has some language in it that doesn't really match the current practice and procedures of the commission. It states that right now that they are, they make recommendations to the city council on policy matters. The proposed ordinance is to strike the word "policy" and just simply leave it as "make recommendations to the city council on matters concerning parks and recreation issues." That has been their practice. For example, there's a written policy that's being circulated right now that almost made this council meeting, but will make a future council meeting related to the policy for the use of Measure Q funds. That's not coming from the Parks and Rec Commission. Those types of policies come from staff or other departments. So in other words, that language, it speaks of the Parks and Rec Commission better than they know, is the best way to put it. And because of that, it triggers anachronistically Form 700 filing requirements for the commissioners, which could chill or disincentivize recruitment of that effort. The, no other advisory bodies of the city are required to do that. There's nothing that the Parks and Rec Commission is doing that should require that. But that language specifically to recommend on policy matters is what's triggering that requirement. So the thought is to conform that to their actual practice. Obviously, if there's a point in time where they want to look at policies and make that recommendation, well, we could obviously amend the code at that time. There's no sleight of hand here to try to evade that requirement. It just seems to be more than as necessary. And there's also a change in the ordinance to make it clear that they, the scope of their advocacy is to the city councils, such as what we made related to the Galt Youth Commission and the Commission on Aging. So we wanted to make sure that was clarified as well. Those are the only changes that are being proposed. There is a strike-throughs and additions in your staff report with the, with the proposed, with the proposed ordinance that makes the changes to those effect, to that effect. I'm happy to answer any questions if there are any, but that concludes my presentation.
Any council member, any question?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Frank, for, I just want to thank you and the city manager for bringing this forward. I appreciate, you know, the house cleaning, I call it house clean, that we continued to do over the last few years, I think, on things like this. We've done several different that are similar because there's inconsistencies between commissions and all of that. And there's still maybe a couple of things with others that we still find moving forward, but I like that we're, we're doing this kind of stuff. I just want to point, so it makes sense what you said in reference to number three, where it states to advocate to city council on behalf of and seek support for Parks and Recreation facilities, programs, and services. Although we're striking the word "policies" from item B1, to advocate for something doesn't, I mean, for the Parks and Rec Commission to advocate to the city council saying that we think we should spend more money on such-and-such things and whatever, that would be advocating, that's, that obviously could maybe influence a policy decision. So it's, but it's not, they're not actually in charge of any policy. They're not directly related to making policy or setting policy, right? I mean, that's.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's just broad language to.
Right, exactly.
Speak for and make recommendations. All of your advisory bodies make recommendations.
Right, exactly.
Some sort, or say, we should, we want the council to look into this. That's why the word "policy," it triggers certain interpretation from the FPPC that's not required here. They are not recommending, and we've confirmed with staff, they're not recommending policies, written policies. For example, even with the whole parks allocation thing, that was recommending usage of facilities. That's already covered by another subsection here. So I just, there's no reason to have that language there.
Yeah, and, and again, you hit the nail on the head with the, you know, that there's no reason to make these positions more difficult. They already are. We already struggle to recruit for some commissions, and we don't want to make people who are interested in the, in the community turned away for the amount of hoops that have to be jumped through to, to simply serve as a volunteer on a commission to help our community. So I, again, thank you, Chris, and thank you, Frank, for getting this, you know, on here and agendized quickly, and that's all I have.
Thank you. Any public comment on this agenda item? If it's not, then I would like to look at a motion to approve item number H2.
So moved.
It's moved by Councilmember Vandenberg. Second by Councilmember Farmer. Madam Clerk, may I have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Papano?
Aye.
Councilmember Farmer?
Aye.
Councilmember Vandenberg?
Aye.
Mayor Sandu?
Aye. Motion passes by 4-2-0. Thank you. Next item, H3, Human Resources Department. Consider approval of an exception to 180-day waiting period to hire a corporal's retirement annutor. Ms. Kobe, first of all, welcome and congratulations.
Thank you so much, Mayor and Council. Happy to be here. So we previously brought this item forward on April 16th, but there was an incorrect date on the resolution, so we're bringing it back to correct that date.
Thank you. Councilmember, any, anybody, any question?
I have no questions. Do we need?
No.
Okay.
You need a quorum, that's all you need.
Any public comment?
Just to be clear, so I, you can't say it and warn you, because this involves a resolution, it needs a majority of the whole membership of the council to approve. So if any of you are inclined to vote no, I need to know that, because maybe we should just wait for Councilmember Farmer.
All right, we will wait for.
I'm not, I'm not, I'm not sensing that anyone is. I just wanted to let you know that.
You don't need four.
Go for it.
Oh, here he is.
Here it comes.
So looking for a motion. Looking for a motion to approve the H3 item is, is moved by Councilmember Vandenberg.
Yep.
Second?
Second by Councilmember Papano. Madam Clerk, may I have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Papano?
Aye.
Councilmember Farmer?
Aye.
Councilmember Vandenberg?
Aye.
Mayor Sandu?
Aye. Motion passes by 4-2-0. Next item, I, communication.
None this evening.
Thank you. And next item, J, city clerk's report.
So this item is to adopt a resolution calling a general municipal election and requesting the Board of Supervisors of Sacramento County to consolidate the general municipal election with the presidential general election held on November 5, 2024. Our resolution institutes a filing fee of $25 for the filing of nomination papers. The resolution also sets the word count limit for an optional candidate statement to 200 words. City council has the discretion to set the word limit between 200 and 400 words. The estimated cost of printing the candidate statement in the voter's pamphlet, at the time, it was estimated by the register of voters to be 750, and we just got it in yesterday, and it is actually $780. The register of voters has requested the city include in our resolution the method by which the winner of a tie vote will be determined and who is responsible for determining the winner. In the past, the city council has elected to hold off a runoff election and a draw-straws method. At this time, it is unknown what the exact amount would be. However, at a minimum, a runoff election would be an additional $39,600, the approximate cost of the general election. City council has the discretion to select an alternative method, which would be the draw-straws, pull name from a hat, or any other general tie-breaking method. Right now, the resolution assumes council will select the runoff election method. And if council chooses to select an alternative method, it must include this method when the motion is made adopting the resolution.
Thank you. Councilmember, any comment on this?
So, so should there be ever that situation where there's a tie? At that time, the council would then decide which of the methods that are highlighted in there that we want to use? But they have to be, we have to use, choose one of the ones that's highlighted in there, or there has to be one named specifically?
We're going to choose it now.
Oh, we're choosing it now?
We have to submit it to the register of voters.
Yeah, and, and I would put forth maybe the idea of using ranked choice voting, because everything is already calculated. It's just some simple math.
What is, what does that, what do you mean?
Ranked choice voting is, you get to select two people or three people, depending on the cycle, right? So let's say it's three people, and you vote A, B, C, and C, D, E wins. They'll take the next, if this person, if it's a tie, the second person that got more second-place votes will win. That's not, I didn't explain it the best, but.
Yeah, I would recommend, I would recommend either a special election or something very simple, like straws. Or, you said coin toss? Is that what you said? Yeah. Those are actually the accepted norms, so I wouldn't want to vary from what, what, what the accepted norms are. And I think we need to keep it very, very simple.
I did read, I read a little bit about the ranked choice, and the problem is all of the other races on the ballot are just a bubble. Choose two, choose three, and it doesn't allow for putting in numbers on the county-wide ballot. So they would have, they would have to give that option to, so it'd be different printing and stuff, so.
I mean, it is scary that we would decide.
And especially what we have is just a special election before, right?
Right. Right now, there, we do not have it in the budget.
It's going to be a very rare chance as when it can be tied, but I like to recommend leaving like this, whatever is already previous.
Drawing straws is what we've done in the past.
What's written down? Nothing? We have to pick it and make it part of the amendment?
Right now, as stated in the resolution, it's a special election.
Special election.
Okay.
That's what was decided in 2022.
We did decide in 2022.
I, I agree with Mr. Papano, draw-straws.
$40,000 is a lot.
Yeah, I don't agree with spending that kind of money. I, it's not, the probability this is going to happen, I don't know that it's ever happened. I mean, we've had some really tight races, but to be a dead tie is almost not impossible, but.
Thirteen last race.
I, I agree, I'm, I'm with the rest of the council on this straw. I feel like at least each person would have their control instead of having somebody else, like, draw a name or something. So I think we just keep it consistent with what last council, what we decided, which was straws.
Can I, can I say something here? Let me ask you this to the city clerk. So once, once it's determined a tie, is there an automatic recount to those, to those ballots? So that way, possibly, when you recount, it could break that tie, and then you go to your draw-straws or your flip a coin or whatever.
Yeah, the county is the one that's going to count that, and they use, they.
It's their responsibility?
Yeah, I mean, I was going to say, there was a day where you could answer this simpler, but they, according to the registrar, they do it methodically, and they do it two or three times before they actually certify the election results. But ultimately, that's outside of our control. That's handled by the county.
Do they look at loose chads and all that?
No comment.
I believe they have a percentage trigger that requires an automatic recount, 1% or something like that.
We also need to decide on the word count, though, right? That's another thing we have to decide.
In the past, it's always been 200 words, but you do have a choice to do 200, 400 words.
It's been 200 in the past?
Yes.
Yeah, I'm disappointed the statement costs has gone up. That just speaks to what Mr. Rodriguez mentioned earlier, where it's, the cost of things are just astronomical for people to, to run for a position that's, you know, barely compensated, but I don't know. My inclination is to leave everything the way it is, I guess, because none of this is monetary stuff.
Except for.
780 is not, we can't determine that, that's.
You're just talking about this one particular item.
The word count on the statement.
They had 200, the cost to be 780, I guess, now, that we have to mention that, and then.
We don't.
Draw-straws.
So we're changing the resolution to draw-straws.
Yes.
Yep.
In your motion.
And to, we have to mention that it's 200, and do we have to mention that it's, instead of 750, it's 780?
No, 780 is fine. That was just an approximate.
So does one of us need to say that out loud?
We need a motion.
I'd, I'd like to.
Changing the resolution.
Make a motion to change the, amend the resolution to state that the word limit will be 200 points, and if it's a tie election, it will be by straws. Drawing straws.
A second.
Before we move to, there is any public comment on that?
No public comment.
Can I say one more thing? So if you do draw-straws, is it the person who gets the short straw gets on council? Or is it the one with the long straw?
The one with the difference. Really getting into the weeds here, Sean.
That doesn't have to be in the resolution.
Okay, so roll call, Councilmember Papano?
Aye.
Councilmember Farmer?
Aye.
Councilmember Vandenberg?
Aye.
Mayor Sandu?
Aye. Motion passes by 4-2-0. Thank you. Next item, K, comments by staff.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Yes, staff, we do have some comment. I think first up, Parks and Rec Director Solis has something to add.
Yeah, so Armando Morales, our park superintendent, was enjoying one of our parks on his day off last week, and he ran into this group of kids that were picking up trash at a community park. Went up and talked to them, asked them what they were doing as part of their service. Troop 238, the Bears, Wolves, and Weeblos of those troops were out there cleaning our parks. So we just wanted to say thank you to them publicly for their, their community outreach and acknowledge them. So, good job.
Next, Public Works Director Selling.
Thank you, Chris. Yeah, just a quick, brief update on the status of C Street Construction. Sure you've seen the signs, and the K-Rail's been delayed a bit. Number of utility conflicts, the contractors finding a lot of shallow service laterals for, you know, water, water, gas sewer. So that's slowing them down a bit. In fact, we've had a couple of damaged services, but they've been quick to repair those and, and keep businesses operating. So just bear with us as we kind of get through this first preliminary utility potholing. And that way, they'll be able to understand, you know, where the real issues and concerns are for when they start their production work on the road reconstruction. So with that, that's all I've got. Thank you.
And Mayor, I have a couple of comments I'd like to add. One is, I would like to let you know that we have not been ignoring the Galt Place comments. Mr. Lee comes in regularly and discusses some of the issues that are facing, and we've heard from other people. We are, we have a small group meeting with the Galt Place ownership on Thursday to review some of those issues and try to get some resolution. So we do continue to work on that despite, you know, you not seeing any activity. So we have not ignored that. The other thing I would like to say is I wanted to welcome Tricia Kobe. This is her second day. This isn't going to be a shock to you. She does come to us from the city of Manteca. I, I believe it. You're going to have to correct me if I'm wrong, because I go from memory, and it's always, it's never good when I do that. You worked there for about 10 years, worked your way up to Human Resources Manager, and you have a bachelor's and a master's degree in human resources. So she brings a wealth of experience, and she's got the background for the position. I worked with her for three and a half years and just had great experiences, both in her technical ability. But I think what I appreciated most was her people skills. She is very good at communicating with staff and working through issues with those that she had come in contact with. So I'm very excited to have her on the team, and it's her second day, and I love it. She's already at council. Welcome.
Thank you, Chris. With that, I would like to make a public announcement that we do have quite a few vacancies for full-time positions. We're currently recruiting for Associate Civil Engineer, Police Dispatcher, Police Officer, Public Works Director, Director, and Senior Civil Engineer.
Thank you very much. And Police Chief Kalinowski had something he would like to add, now that he's back in the room.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. A couple of things. We hired two new officers and swore them in yesterday. We will have a public swearing-in, as we do with our new staff here in the coming weeks. And with that, we have. And with that, we have three officer openings remaining and two dispatcher openings remaining. And so we're in a much better place than we were. So great work by our recruiting team and all the staff to pull that together and make that happen. And then I just want to make a public acknowledgement for the department and all the works they've done since last, a week ago Sunday, when we started our memorial events for the county and the state memorial for fallen officers. It started with our family barbecue, so the families of fallen officers go up to Sacramento Police Department or Sheriff's Department, they rotate each year, and have fellowship, and eat some food, and, and talk amongst themselves. And that really is the launch point for all the activities that occur going forward. So after that, I had honor guard staff, or honor guard officers at our county memorial on Thursday. On Saturday, we had honor guard at the airports escorting the families of fallen officers who had to fly in from Southern California and other places, places in the state. So staff did that on their days off. And then they were at the candlelight vigil on Sunday and the state memorial on Monday. So it was a long run for staff. The Graywall family will be going to DC, and Corporal Steele, who's a family liaison, will be going back there with them, so there's a representative of the department with them next week when they're at the events over there. So I just wanted to give that acknowledgement. I won't be here on the 21st, the city manager's aware. I know, don't, don't be shocked, right? But we'll have security, there's, the management staff will be at a training out of town. So that's all I have for you tonight, thank you.
Thank you.
And Mayor, we have a late arrival to the staff comment. Economic Development Director, Amy Mendez.
My apologies, I just wanted to give a, a brief reminder that the State of the City is coming up on Thursday, May 16th. That is being held at Papa's and Wings in the Old Town area. Tickets are available on the Galt Chambers website. I'm sure you can purchase them directly from the Chamber office as well in the Old Town on Fourth Street. But yes, just a brief reminder that that'll be happening, and staff will be giving portion of the presentations. Mayor Sandu will be opening with some remarks, and the CSD police, or Fire Chief will also be there, giving some portion of his presentation. So just wanted to give a quick reminder in case anybody didn't have it on their calendar already.
Did you have something you'd like to add? That's it for staff.
Thank you. Comments by city council, Councilmember Papano?
Welcome, Ms. Koby. Welcome aboard. And once again, thanks to Public Works, reflecting back not only on all the regular work, but the floods and so forth, and the good work, so resolution is well-earned, and I appreciate it.
Councilmember Farmer?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Welcome again, welcome aboard, and hopefully you'll like it here. Seems like we keep trading a lot of paint with Manteca, I don't know. I don't know, hope, hope we're getting to good trades. Seems like we're getting good trades, I think. Yeah. Yeah. I attended the senior bingo that the Commission on Aging orchestrates at the Chabola yesterday, was able to catch the last little bit of it. Very well attended, they got like, they got like almost 100 people. So that event has grown, they get a lot of donations from people in the community, and they give out a lot of food, and they, winners get gift cards from generous businesses in town. And so I just want to say thanks to the Commission on Aging people and the volunteers who are not on the commission, who help put that event on every time they do it. I, I bumped into one of the commissioners at Walmart the other night, she was shopping for the food for the bingo. I mean, so these people put in a lot of time to make that happen for these seniors, and it's, it's a, it's a great event. And I thank you to Parks and Rec staff for, you know, supporting that event and being there to make that possible. And let's see, I, I wanted to also say, you know, thanks to your guys' staff for, I know it's been a bummer with the Saturday market, you know, just really bad luck with the, with the weather thing, but I know you guys put a ton of work in with it, and then having to pull plug last minute, it was the right decision. But, you know, just move forward to the next month, but just pass that along, we thank you for, you know, all the hard work in, in spite of it being canceled. And then the last thing I just want to mention was, thanks to Public Works and our city manager and Ms. Mendez, and everybody else that I may not be privy to, with the outreach that's taking place, and it will continue, of course, during the C Street project. We all know this is a fluid project, and there's things that, you know, we're keeping our ear to the ground and, and hearing concerns of people, and we're addressing them quickly. Our city manager was very quick to address a concern by a business owner that was unhappy about something, and he, I want to thank him again publicly for just going right out there personally and meeting with that business owner and, and finding some resolution with that. And so, you know, this council has promised the city that, you know, this will be as smooth as possible. There will be hiccups, but we've promised that even though there might be hiccups, that, that the outreach will be good, communication will be good, and that we will try to keep the burden to a minimum. And I just, I think that we've done a good job with that so far. So I want to make sure that we do that and continue that forward, be very, you know, forward with information, and, 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 you know, the process goes forward. So thank you all for that. And that's all I had, so, thank you.
Councilmember Vandenberg?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I agree with most everything Mr. Farmer said. I just wanted to mention real quickly that the power of public comment, you know, a lot of people complain online and stuff, and it doesn't do a whole lot of good, but when you come up here, nobody can avoid what you have to say. And it, it has a lot more weight and power, and people feel it, so good on you. Welcome, Ms. Koby. That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember. Myself, first of all, thank you for all staff, all their department working hard, thank you. Thank you, Chris Reyes, your leadership. I also like to thank you for the public comment, and thank you for taking to this meeting, sitting down in the chamber for a couple hours. Thank you for everybody. The only thing I attend this week last Saturday, there was a grand opening and ribbon-cutting ceremony was Galt Food Center. They spent a lot of money for renovate that Galt Food Center, and a lot of stuff they put, they put a lot of inventory inside. I especially thank you, Tony and David, they are a new owner on that store, and they spent a lot of money. I thank you for them to spending their money in this town. And that's all, that's all. If anybody have question, if nobody have no question, I would like to adjourn, the meeting is 7:18. Thank you.